Yes, because it's not in the rules of council. It is.
Thank you. No. Good mark.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
No, you're good. Please stand for the pride of allegiance.
United States, where we stand, one nation, under God, in the visible, limited justice law.
Please remain standing for a moment of silent reflection for our servicemen and women throughout the world, and continued prayers for Detective Kyle Gil-Martin's recovery, and for those who have passed away in our community, especially Robert Keegan Jr. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mr. King?
Here.
Mr. Schuster?
Present.
Dr. Rothschild?
Here.
Mr. McAndrew?
Present.
Mr. Smurl?
Here.
I would like to take, I'm sorry, but I would like to make a motion to take from the table Resolution Number 9 of 2024.
There's a motion on the floor and a second to take from the table Resolution Number 9, 2024. This resolution is a liquor license transfer. It is being taken from the table and placed in seventh order for a final vote. On the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
The ayes have it, so moved.
I would also like to make a motion to take from the table file of the Council Number 1 of 2024.
Second.
There's a motion on the floor and a second to take from the table file of Council Number 1 of 2024. This ordinance designating the 1,200 block of Watson Street as a one-way street is being taken from the table and placed into seventh order for final vote. On the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Frank?
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved. Dispense with three of minutes.
Third order, 3A, correspondence received February 5, 2024, from Business Administration, ARPA Director, for the Institute's City of Scranton ARPA 2023 Evaluation. 3B, correspondence received February 7, 2024, from City Business Administration regarding updated payroll preparation tax collections as of February 6, 2024. 3C, correspondence received from the Business Administration regarding a budget transfer for the City of Scranton's HR Department. 3D, correspondence dated February 9, 2024, from the Department of Public Works Engineering Project Coordinator regarding Rubicon update. 3E, Lackawanna County Planning Commission Subdivision and Land Development Evaluation Reports received February 12, 2024. 3F, memorandum dated February 14, 2024, from Business Administration regarding a check for deposit from Comcast to the City of Scranton. 3G, controller's report for the month ending January 31, 2024. 3H, overtime report for all departments as provided by city controller received February 15, 2024. 3I, correspondence received from the Business Administration ARPA Director regarding a budget transfer by the City of Scranton to Neighborworks dated February 14, 2024.
Are there any comments on any of the third-party order items?
My only comment on third-order items is, did we get a date on the Rubicon rollout? Or are we still waiting on that date?
We're still waiting, Mr. Schuster.
Thank you, Frank.
Anyone else? If not, received and filed. Do any council members have any announcements of this time?
I have two of them. So, the Knights of Columbus at St. Anne's Basilica will be having two fish fries, all right, coming up March 1 and the 15th. They're takeout-only, and the menu is, of course, beer battered cod, fries, tartar sauce drink. Meals will be served from St. Peter and Paul's Parish, not the Basilic itself, on West Locust Street. The donation's $10 per meal, which is a great price, and tickets are available online or by calling (570) 241-6420. And also, coming up on Sunday, March 3, will be at Holy Rosary Basketball Hall, COPS versus Fire Department. It benefits the Holy Rosary Youth Basketball League. It'll be the Scranton Police Department versus the Fire Department. Admission is $5, and there'll be some raffles and 50/50. I've been there a few years in a row, and it's a great event, so I encourage everyone to go. And that is all I have.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yes. As everyone knows, on Saturday, March 9, will be the St. Patrick's Day Parade, which will kick off with the mass at 10:00 a.m. at St. Peter's Cathedral. And then there's going to be a race, which starts at 11 o'clock. The race this year, it's a two-mile race, and it runs the entire parade route, so it's a total of two miles. Starts up here by the Cultural Center, runs down past the cathedral, turns around and goes back. But all proceeds this year for the two-mile St. Patrick's Day Parade race are going to go to Kyle Gil-Martin, Detective Gil-Martin. So, we're trying to encourage as many of the runners locally and regionally to try to come out and support Detective Gil-Martin, so that we can really try to raise some additional funds for he and his family. So, that's all I have. Thank you. You can go to the parade, if you go to the St. Patrick's Day Parade of Lackawanna County website, that's where the registration is for that race, so if anyone is looking to sign up. Thank you.
I have Greenwood, Greenridge Neighborhood Association Hometown Hero banners. It'll be the last opportunity to order them, March 2, between 1:00 and 4:00 p.m., at St. Clair's Church at 2251 North Washington Avenue, in the lower church, in the lower auditorium. And the South Scranton Residents Association meeting was moved from last week to February 21st tomorrow at 509 Cedar Avenue at 6:30.
Mr. President, I have one more thing. You know, it has to do with the PUC and the PUC hearing. I received a call about a week ago from Attorney Jessica Escrib, indicating that the PUC had reviewed all of the tapes from the hearings, and apparently, when I had indicated on there that people, people didn't get their bills from December, and then ultimately, when they did get their bill in January, they got a late charge, I kind of said that's like a punch in the face. I had indicated that the only way, at that time, the only way that you would get a refund is if you contacted them and complained about it. Well, I'm told that they are rectifying that. They are not, you are not going to have to reach out to them, they're going to go back, and they'll, so everybody should look and check your bills. Any overcharges you may have gotten or late fees should be corrected in future billing. For instance, the City of Scranton got a $729 late fee, because we never got the bill here for the city. So, there's a lot of people out there. So, I'm told, I'm told that you don't have to contact them, they will credit your future billing, so it's one good thing that came out of that, so hopefully, we'll be a lot more positive that we'll come out of that, and hopefully, we can stop them for these increases. Thank you.
Fourth order, citizen participation.
Joan Hoda-Wanis. Joan Hoda-Wanis, Scranton. First thing, just want to point out that the Friends of the Scranton Public Library will hold their quarterly book sale next week, starting on Tuesday, February 27, and running through Saturday, March 2, at the marketplace at Steamtown, right in front of the Crunch Gym. These are change in dates, we used to do it Monday through Sunday, it's now Tuesday through Saturday. You can get some great bargains, books, $1 or $2, and children's books as low as 25 cents. Item 3C on today's agenda, the budget modification, the request for HR. They want to add $54,925.79 to HR's professional services line item to pay invoices. I wonder, are those invoices from Mr. Uffberg? I suspect they probably are. And speaking of Mr. Uffberg, the union contracts for firefighters and police are still not on the city's website. For firefighters, it's been 323 days since the arbitrator signed his decision, and for the police, 207 days. And I fully intend to bring in a cake on April 4 to celebrate the first anniversary of waiting for those documents to get on the website. Remember, I was told 120 days, so the lawyers could, you know, coordinate and dot their i's and cross their t's. So, I'll bring in a cake, and I think a bottle of champagne. Okey-dokey. I'm curious, I saw in the paper quite a bit of coverage that the county is taking action against Pennsylvania American Water for the pollution of Roaring Brook and Lackawanna River from dam number seven in Dunmore. Is the city doing anything to cooperate with them or support their effort?
I know Bernie McGurll was involved in that, and he is on our, the new council that we had just formed, for the Environmental Council.
Well, yeah, I know, I was at their last meeting, they're not going to have another meeting for a while. Bernie Smurl is on it, but not Bernie Smurl, Bernie, you know who I mean. I was just curious, I wonder if that pollution event was payback for the ratepayer complaints about the increase, rate increases for water usage. I'll tell you, you know, you can't make this stuff up, we should still have the office going, we have some great stories they could tell. Payroll preparation taxes, on the paper, that the fourth quarter payments for 2023 are due on February 28, which means sometime after that, we should be seeing some very high numbers for the year 2023, correct? Unless people are delinquent, and hopefully, any delinquencies will be contacted. Oh, I saw the press release on the city's website on the February 13 snowstorm, you know, you canceled last week, and you know, there was, they banned parking beginning at midnight on the 13th, and you know, so those snowplows could get through the downtown. Well, I live downtown, and I didn't see one damn snowplow. I think we had about an inch of snow downtown, and everybody ignored the parking ban, so I don't know, I just thought that was a very amusing day. But I will say one thing, two initiatives that I'm very impressed by, one is the item 5B, the refinancing of the 2016 notes to get a better interest rate, which you discussed during the caucus, I think that's very important. And the other one I saw in the paper was the proposal for long-term financial forecasting and planning. I think they're both very good initiatives. You need to get away from year-to-year budget, you need to have a long-term vision. And I think they're both thanks to Matthew Dominus, he's probably the smartest man in this building, and probably the most talented. You're not going to find a replacement, so you should try to keep him. Thank you.
Thank you, Joan. Les Spindler?
Good evening, Council, Les Spindler, city resident homeowner. First off, I want to thank Councilman McAndrew for bringing up two weeks ago, the two things I brought up about the bridge on Main Avenue, and educating the people in this city about gangs. He made my wife look bad, because she always says to me, "Why do you go to those meetings? Nobody ever listens." So, I threw that back in her face, I said, "See, somebody's listening." So, thank you.
You're welcome.
Next thing, I don't know if anybody saw it, but there's been a commercial on TV about Jews, that says Jewish people make up 2.4% of the United States population, and since the terrorist attack, Jewish hate has gone up 388%. And I think our mayor is part of that 388% for refusing to raise the flag of Israel that was given to the city. And I make sure, I let all my Jewish friends know what she's doing or not doing. And it's not just Jewish people, there's many other people that aren't Jewish that support the Israeli flag being raised, and she's wrong in doing that. And I hope, I know, it will affect her when she's up for reelection. My next thing, two weeks ago, on Channel 16, they ran a piece how Wilkes-Barre is fixing their potholes. They don't just throw cold patches in and not even paint it down like we do. As I'm a witness, the last week, on Euclid Avenue going into the Village of Tripp Park, there was a pothole, go by there every day, and that's all they did. They threw cold patch in it, and had cars go over it and paint it down. In Wilkes-Barre, you know what they do? They have bought a machine that keeps the asphalt heated to 250 degrees, they put it in the hole, they paint it down with a machine, and they have another machine that heats the tar to 500 degrees. They seal around the hole with the tar, and then they put sand over it, so it doesn't stick to anybody's car. That's permanent. What we do is temporary, it's a waste of time, because those patches they put in don't even last. I think the city should look in to get in a machine like that. I think Mayor Cognetti should call Mayor Brown, who I wish he was our mayor, because he's doing a heck of a job, and look into getting that machine, make a permanent fix, not a temporary one. It's a great thing that they do. Uh, next thing, Joan beat me to it, but I want to talk about what Pennsylvania American Water did with that dam, and all that sediment going into Roaring Brook and Lackawanna River. The DEP should investigate that and slap a huge fine on them, that's ridiculous. I'm surprised Bernie McGurll and all these other people associated with the Lackawanna River corridor are up in arms about that. I haven't heard many people complain about it, but that's ridiculous. They should be fined tremendously for that. It's a darn shame, that they're not even going to stock those, the Brook or the river, because the trout will probably dry, die. Next thing, while we're talking about pave cuts, there's a pave cut on the corner of Main Avenue and Philo Street, and I think it was the water company that did it quite a few months ago. It's where National Bakery is. They just threw the blacktop in there, it's, it's caving in, you have to either go around it or almost go really slow going over, because I go that way almost every day. So, there, that's another thing that the water company screwed up. Oh, here's a, why was the meeting canceled last week? No answer? Well, we had two inches of snow, and it was gone by like noon time, and there was a parking ban in the city. Really? Two inches of snow, and we had a parking ban? What is going on in this town? It's laughable, it's ridiculous that there was a parking ban for two inches of snow. Unbelievable. Last thing, a few people have come to this podium and say that we're going to get into World War III because of President Biden. Well, the guy that's going to get us to World War III is Donald Trump. Because last week was on the news that he ordered Putin to attack NATO countries that don't pay some kind of fee that they're supposed to pay. So, the guy's a loose cannon, and he's going to get us to World War III, not Joe Biden. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Les. Mr. Waldenberg, will you send PAWC if it is there? Can you please be quiet? Will you see if they will send a crew out to Philo Street and Main Avenue if they, they did indeed make that cut, or who made the cut?
I will in the morning, sir.
Thank you. Lee Morgan?
Good evening, Council. The first thing I have here is during the Doherty administration, the city had a paving machine like that, and they scrapped it. The first thing I have here for the residents is, this is a copy of the Home Rule Charter. Now, probably the council members here have never read it, okay? But it says in Section 312, "The council may make investigations into the affairs of the city and the conduct of any department, officer, or agency in the aid of its legislative powers and functions, and may issue subpoenas for those purposes." And the reason I'm saying is that is because Mr. Smurl last week said he was only a legislator. And I think it's really important to realize just how corrupt and collectively stupid our elected officials are. We have, we heard somebody, the council president, say that he didn't think that the inspectors ever did a condemnation if they weren't certified. Well, from what I've read, and the council has the same information, but they're not really sharing it with the public, because they really do a terrible job at doing their job, they're extremely corrupt. Mr. King said one time, "Well, if I'm corrupt, prosecute me." Well, you are corrupt, and you're destroying the city, and councils like you have done it for a long time, and it's not a big secret, everybody knows it, and that's why people are fleeing the city, okay? But the city building inspector, Michael Guarde, he wasn't even certified, he condemned 31 buildings. There's a record of it, you should look at it, you're the council, use your powers of subpoena to figure it out. You have that power. Now, I have a hearing in front of Judge Berace tomorrow, and hopefully, he's going to let me combine what I have going on against the city, but you know, suing the city in court is a waste of time. You're not going to end that corruption like that. You've got to get fools out of government. You know, the most serious things we're really facing in this city is we're locked right out of our city hall. We've got corruption just running rampant. Imagine being one of the 31 people in this city that had their property condemned by an inspector who legally couldn't do the condemnation. And what about all the quality-of-life tickets? And you know, when you're a person and you're trying to represent yourself at the Building Appeals Board, and the people on that board aren't allowed to ask a question, now you've got to realize something, these five council members created that law, you all signed it. Where are the rights of the citizens? Where's recourse? Why does the city collect a fine, and then you do an appeal, and you win, and you don't get your money back? Is it just a revenue enhancement? Do you really support that kind of corruption? You know, Mr. Smurl, I know you're really busy, I wouldn't look up either, because really, it just smacks of all the corruption we're facing in this city. It's all around us. It's collective stupidity. You look at the city, for 85 years, people have been leaving here. We're building a project at Naug Park with grant money. Look at the project taking place in front of the building here. They could have bought the former Storm Fister Building, the Court Annex Building, for $1.6 million, and moved all the city departments into that building, and saved a ton of money, and rented the downstairs floors for business, and the city could have made money. We just keep electing people that have great plans for this city, but really and honestly, they have no plan. So, Mr. Smurl, what do you intend to do about the 31 properties that were condemned by an inspector that didn't have the authority to do condemnations? You're the council president, you can put your pencil down, and you can just answer my question, if you would.
I'll answer your question, fifth order.
Well, I think you should do it now. I think all the council members should say something. Why, somebody has a chance to say something back to you. Because the truth of the matter is, this city is dying because of actions like this council and previous ones. There's no opportunity for the young people here, we squandered all this grant money. You know, at one time, Scranton had a very vibrant African-American community, and in the '70s, they used grant money to tear it all down. You know, you got to really see how corrupt this government is, and realize that. And I'm not mixing words with you, I'm sitting there right here, right in front of you, and telling you you're corrupt. You can't justify the Naug Park project, all the grant money you're spending, you know, licensing inspections is just, you've got all the information I have, and nothing's happening. People need to be fired, including the director, and I've got statements that they made, to the open records, everything. And it's just asinine how deceptive this council really is. Thanks for your time.
Ron Elman?
Good evening, my counsel. The Times consider Chris Kelly a columnist. I, on the other hand, consider Chris Kelly no more than an over-the-hill has-been allowed to use the media to further his evil poison pen. He referred to me a year or so ago as an intolerable bigot prevailing upon his domain of bleeding hearts. of bleeding hearts. But in reality, I consider Kelly the intolerable bigot whose, I guess, his behavior against others show his intolerance of anybody else's opinion or especially in politics. I, I've known Mr. Scaville for 15 or 20 years, if anybody was wondering. And I, I'm not taking sides, but Kelly's article was needless. It's just something to fill pages unnecessarily to me. Frank has served his sentence and it's time to put it aside except for people, little, little people like Kelly. You know, there's organizations and individuals work to assist people to get back in society. And then you have people like Kelly that work against them. What I proclaim before all of you though is Kelly's support and admiration for an anti-American, anti-Jewish, anti-Israeli, disgusting racist who authors letter after letter, year after year, promoting and supporting his favorite endorsement that vermin Hamas, letter after letter. And Kelly, this, Kelly takes his abusing the paper, say, "My newfound friend." This was, this was a terrible statement to me. Unfortunately, Dominic Sadali, that authors all this trash, is a resident of this city. Kelly refers to Frank's offense as a violent, cradish attack. What's worse than that? Well, it's Kelly's show of admiration and friendship with his newfound friend Sadali. That's worse. You know, to change the subject, I didn't know to a day or two ago, when you go to the jail to visit, you can't bring your phone in. I, I don't, I didn't know this policy and I understand it, but there, there should be some little place for people to put their phones. You know, even if you had to pay a dime or a quarter to use it for a couple hours. The reason I, I heard about this, a young lady entrusted someone she didn't know with her phone and it disappeared. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Elman. That's all on the signing list. Anyone else want to address counsel?
Tom Coymanuka. First of all, I want to address that I did ask earlier before the meeting started, City Council, to allow me to present a under-two-minute video as part of my presentation here. It was reviewed by council and by the attorney of this body and it was denied because it was not, public comment was not public comment when it was video. Even though in every single meeting they have here with quorums and people in here, which is present right now, video projections and displays are allowed. So there's been selective use of this and I protest that. I also protest the fact that I did give them even the opportunity for an in-camera review of the material beforehand because it was brought up that the appropriateness of it may not be, may not be sensible for this body. And the insurances that it may not be acceptable because they had no idea what I presented, I could present something off, off-topic or off-color. I made the comment that any one of the speakers coming to the podium could do the same thing. They didn't want to hear that argument. They didn't want to hear the argument that anything coming before this body can be off-color when it comes up for public speaking, as it has been. So on that, I dropped that because I have limited time. This is day 726 of the war in Ukraine, almost the anniversary of the third-year start. I had brought through a, a video to support Ukraine, the citizens and the people under those burdens, but that's not allowed at this city hall who refuses to fly the Ukrainian flag. Shame on them. "The glory and freedom of Ukraine has not yet perished. Luck will still smile upon us, brother Ukrainians. Our enemies will die as the dew in the sunshine and we two brothers will live happily in our land. We will not spare either souls or our bodies to get the freedom and prove that we are the brothers or of Kozak kin." That is part of the pledge of the Ukrainian anthem. You've heard it, but maybe you don't understand the words of people coming and standing up and fighting for their freedom, for their home, and giving their souls for what's right. I question that at this body at this point. Now onto 5B of this topics. To keep it on topic, the verbiage is very vague and it requests an obligation bond of In the fifth, so fifth whereas, it allows the mayor to control and choose the use of anything unexpended. She can use $200,000, $1 million, or any part of the reinvestment on the 216, the 2016 bonds and has no strings attached to what the residue of that entire bond is. So effectively, by signing this with no limitations under the fifth whereas, if she uses $2 million out of that bond and decides that $34 million is play money, hey, you've given her an open check and you've done that beforehand with the Recovery Act funds that were supposed to come back to this body for approval every time they were expended and was never enforced. There was a question last week about the director of OCD. If she was working for the city, and the response was puzzling that you cannot say if an employee is currently or not currently a city employee without exposing non-public information. It's somewhat evident by the city's employment, employment portal that we're looking for both an OEC director and a communication project manager for AARP. So your secret's out. Third, it was brought before this body. It's a legislative body, but for the most part, this body, unlike the Congress and Senate, approves no legislation, produces no legislation. You only approve it. In the past two years, can you name five ordinances that were produced in this body, not rubber stamped and produced by another? How about three? I'll leave the other terms on here because I'm running out of time. But I consider the suppression a violation of First Amendment rights. I hope that we can review this after the meeting, that it can be presented next week. Thank you.
Counsel Mark Margavage, Scranton. Good evening. I know it's a small detail. Any update on the photos I requested?
We have not received them to date, Mr. McAndrew.
Okay. So we're just going to assume that the, the person didn't do their job then? I guess that's safe. Correct? Anyone think that the person did their job up there? Took the photos and just aren't sharing them? Okay, we'll just assume that that's what it is. I never got a response from the director of that department, but, you know, it's only been a month and about six weeks, but anyway. You know, I know we always say that's administration issue, but as Mr. King, you know, I spoke to you in early May about the, the issue and only came to you after I was ignored by the administration. And, you know, here's my letter to Mayor Paige Cognetti, not signed for, just got it back. So we do try to reach administration, but we come here for help when we don't get that answer. So now, on, on a side note, I did hear someone mention Wilkes-Barre. I actually was there this past week at city hall and city hall is wide open. I was there about 20 minutes to, to 1:00. I had to wait for someone to come at 1:00 and was able to walk the whole building if I wanted to go speak to the mayor. I just asked, maybe we could do the same thing to our city hall, get it open again? And back to the, uh, two weeks or three weeks ago when I spoke, I was looking for the right-to-know request. This right-to-know request was regarding the question that you had asked from me, Mr. McAndrew, about has any property ever been condemned by the city released to the property owner without going through the appeal process? The city responded and said my property was and that the reason was is because I had the issue fixed. So I wanted to know that document. I did get it. The document I actually shared with three people in our audience before the meeting and I wanted to know if they could tell me by reading the document what issue I was, that, that it was that I repaired. Well, they went, it was unfair question, but it was, I asked Mr. Les, Ms. Joan, and Ms. Marie and they all failed, but it's because it doesn't actually state the, the reason. So next week I'll be getting into that and then, you know, I only ask that if I do prove my case of a, someone's, I guess, lack of ethical standards, that we look to perhaps remove this person from their position. Now, I do also want to talk about the quality of life. Did not know Mr. Morgan was talking about it, but I do have an issue with, with myself, the issue that I have. And if I'm incorrect, when I read it, I did not see the appeals process on there. So I don't know if I am correct, but this is what I was told is the procedures. When you get a citation, we're just going to say $100. Your choice is to pay the citation, I'm not worried about the timeframe, or you could have a $300 non-refundable appeal. Does anyone know that to be not correct? Okay. So is there any chance that maybe we can correct that to actually be refundable and actually appropriate with the fine itself? Whether we have $100 fine and not have a $300 appeal fee? I, I think it's borderline unconstitutional there. Not that I have the funds to fight that, but I do believe that's a violation of due process. Attorney Gilbride, would you have any comment?
Please, Justice Counsel, you, you can't speak to our attorney.
Okay.
He's here for counsel.
Oh, okay.
I think that we could possibly look into that.
Okay.
Research it a little bit.
Yeah. And, and the, the, the second part of it was, and I'm sorry, I didn't mean to speak to you if I couldn't. Apologize. But the second part of that, which was a little disturbing, is that if you do want to take it to the magistrate, you're told at that point, then they're just going to double your $100 fine to 200 to go to the magistrate. And now, obviously, if you lose at the magistrate, I think you deserve to pay the court costs. I'm not disagreeing with that, but I do think it's unfair that the fine should be doubled just because you don't want to pay a $300 non-refundable appeal. I wish I had those odds in life to give someone a bill and tell them if they don't pay me, I'm going to double it. You could fight it and I'm not going to give you that money back either, you know? So I'm just looking if we could possibly have some thought into that. So is that what everyone believes it to be the case? Did I misspeak? Anything on that? $100 fine, $300 non-refundable appeal? Or they'll double it in court?
That's, you know, I, I've heard that also.
Okay.
I, I think it is unreasonable, so.
Yeah.
We should have the opportunity to take a look at that or explain the rationale for it.
I couldn't find it in the.
I'd pay the $100, but, but.
What's that?
I'd pay the $100.
But at that three.
And I agree, if I'm, if I believe I'm right, I, I'd fight with the three, but it's not fair.
Yeah.
You lose either way. So I think it's something we, I'll, I'll bring it up in fifth order.
Thank you.
Good evening, counsel. Dave Goffin, resident taxpayer. What do you think of the water company now? Isn't that lovely? We're getting our Diddy box charged off for water service and they contaminate the river for years maybe, years. And by the way, if you give them a nice hefty fine or whatever, then we're going to pay the bill because they're guaranteed a profit. The ultimate in corporate greed and malfeasance. And by the way, in my neighborhood, there's all kinds of water projects going on. Six to seven days of no or low water since the beginning of January. So isn't that wonderful? I'd really like to see your paper that you were using to speak off of, if at all possible. I'll get together with you on Mr. King. And the thought occurred to me that if something like that happens again, maybe we could have all of the, all of the council sign up together and then tag-team. So you get your point across because that was an atrocity that they shut Mr. King down. That was a real atrocity. He's an elected official. You get to listen to the Goff every week and a lot of times people might be unhappy with the way they were treated by government, but there and again, you know, when I look at insurance and utilities, I'm a couple hundred dollars a month behind what I was before that fancy raise because I'm going to be 70 in the spring and naturally I'm on, on social security. So it just thinks I've gotten out of hand. And our friend, Mr. Trump, well, I don't want to ever see him back in office, ever. He's most unqualified. You know, if I stopped by the bar here and had five or six shots of whiskey and hit somebody on the way home, even if there were a senile old person that ran out in front of me and the accident was unavoidable, it had nothing really to do with my drinking, people would want to lynch me. And then you turn around and with COVID in September of 2020, he canceled 20 million doses of vaccine. They didn't start taking care of people. It was supposed to be medical personnel and elderly. They didn't start to deal with those people until after the first of the year, 2021. It was just resentment. It was resentment over the fact that he was expecting not to, he was expecting to lose the election because things were heating up too much. You know, you can't stop something like COVID. And by the way, our friends in China, they could have bought our, our vaccine, which did work, theirs didn't. And they still have it going on. They just unlocked people up two or three years from now. So what do we want all these strong men around? You know, by the way, also, if you go by the former Chamberlain Plant General Dynamics, you will see cars parked right down Mattis Avenue. The reason they're parked there is because they have to go through a security check to drive onto the property. And those are Scranton jobs. And those are Scranton jobs. Eighty percent of the money is spent with that we afforded Ukraine in the United States and they need a lot more of it. And hopefully one of those artillery shells will wind up right up Hoopski's butt. Thank you and have a good night.
Good evening, counsel, Mike Mancini from Scranton. First and foremost, I'd like to give continued thoughts and prayers to Detective Kyle Gil Martin. We're all praying for your, your recovery. Counsel, I'd like to address each of those chairs this evening and the Oregon in the room. I'm being very serious. Since mid-October, I've been here talking about a narrative about the sale of the Scranton Parking Authority and the Scranton Sewer Authority. To my dismay, this council has yet to act on this matter. All right, I mentioned that fortunately I'm usually right. Chances are there's a rain tax in those documents and there's also a 2% increase per year for the next 10 years. You know, we're quick to talk about the water bills and the increase to that and rightfully so we have to, but when they're able to increase it higher than the threshold and not one of these people in these chairs are addressing the issue, it becomes an issue. All right? I'm a big fan of those that are present. It's one thing to be here, but to be present is a different story. When you're present, you're able to determine the difference between right and wrong. All right? In my opinion, this body decided to have somebody from Kingston represent us as the highest paying office here in the city. And that's a business administrator. About two months ago, Elaine Cipriani and I had a conversation about the sale of the parking authority and Scranton Sewer Authority. She mentioned at that time that her right to know officer, Gracie, was looking downstairs in the basement for the past month and could not locate those documents. Now she's compelled at that time to tell the law department and the solicitor so the solicitor could verify that those documents are not here. I'm not going to ask Councilman Gilbride, I'm sorry, Councilman, Solicitor Gilbride, I call a lot of people worse, Council, Solicitor Gilbride, I'm not going to ask him directly, but you know, there are municipal laws for the retainerage of these documents. Now President Smurl, you and I had a conversation here, what was it, four weeks ago? You were told that they cannot locate these documents. As council president, I know looking through these, through the city Home Rule Charter, that you were inclined to notify the authorities. All right? These documents are not here. They need to be here. They need to be addressed and you need to look at them. All right? Elaine Cipriani did not tell the law department or she did. Regardless, if they're not here, they have to do something about it. You guys requested these documents, what, a month ago, three weeks ago? Where are they? They're not here. All right? Those that are present know the difference between right and wrong. All right? We know this by watching the simplest of things. Price is Right had a game, shell game, right? Spin the, spin the shells? Well, guess what? Those that are present know exactly where the pickleball is. They don't kiss it on a daily basis. All right? When you make decisions like this, you get these results. Our last remaining asset are these roads, but yet we have to sit there, swerve out of the way just to prevent ourselves from getting our cars out of alignment. All right? This might be good for somebody from Oregon, but it's not good for me. This is not the Scranton that I know. This is not the Scranton that I remember. I'm asking for Elaine Cipriani's immediate dismissal. I want her to resign. Step down. You're not doing anything good for this city. This railway system is coming through and not to this in the future. We're nowhere near ready for this. And then now let me address the, the city solicitor. Jessica Escrow apparently called me on the phone because I'm asking the right questions. All right? During the process, I told her that if she finds these documents, looks through them, and if there's any wrongdoing, she has to notify the proper authorities. All right? If these documents are not here, she hasn't notified the authorities, this body, the city, you're on violation of municipal, municipal law. Solicitor Gilbride knows this. All right? I know this because I talked to three different attorneys over 50 years' experience. I expect my answers to be addressed. All right? I'm not going anywhere. I've been here long before pickleball Paige and I'd be longer after her. She's not going to find that golden ticket in those pools when they open next year. All right? I expect everybody to be present next time and do the right thing. This is the end of the clinic. This one's free. Good night, counsel.
Anyone else? No one else? Frank?
Fifth order, five A motions.
Marie Schumacher, resident of the East Mountain of Scranton, Pennsylvania. I just have a problem with what we do and what we don't do. A while back, I brought up Serenti. I asked what the revenue was because we had been told there would be a revenue by the mayor herself. And what was to be done? And I don't know that anybody followed up on that. Because there is no revenue, what was done that we were told was going to be done? What is going on at Serenti now? Does anybody know?
I thought, I thought they, didn't we ask them that? And they said.
I answered it.
And they said that they never indicated that there was going to be re. I wasn't hearing that initially.
The amount, the money part that came from, the police department had purchased a program and they said that by having that program, they may be able to generate money from letting other departments come in and use it. But as far as this Renty Center purchased, I probably still have it here, it was, was not purchased with the idea of it bringing in money.
That was one of the reasons the mayor gave for buying it. I don't know, I'd like, I'd like to know what's going on there now. I mean, how, how, how long is it used? Who's using it? Is anybody else coming in at all?
Well, the Scranton Police and Fire Department are both utilizing it. I, I know work stopped up there because of a contract problem, but I don't know what else.
Oh, well, that makes it okay, yeah. Has it been, has it been settled?
No, it has not.
How long has it been going on?
I don't know. I don't know when the job stopped.
Those are things I think the taxpayers have a right to know.
Well, there was a problem with the contract, so you know, if, if the job wasn't progressing in the, in the way that we thought, maybe that's why we stopped it and, and decided to hold and, and look at it.
Okay. I just believe we have as taxpayers a right to know what's going on and you have a right to tell us, actually an obligation, not just a right.
I believe there's a lawsuit going on with the contractor. I think that's, I believe there's a lawsuit with the contractor happening over, a dispute over whatever the contract is. And I believe that's what's held up any other construction.
Okay. Also, where's Engine 15?
The physical truck itself? The, the actual engine?
Yeah. Why, why is it in its place?
I, I don't know. I don't know. They keep backup engines there. It may even be in the Serenti Center. I don't know where they keep it.
I don't know. All I know is we were supposed to do something with that home of Engine 15 and I took a ride up today and it is empty. Well, not totally empty. There's a four drawer file cabinet and there was something else in there.
Yes, I know the police department were using it.
Do we need that building? What are we keeping it for if we don't need it?
No, I believe we don't need it and I believe when the last council was here that did this, when it was Wayne Evans, Joe Wexler and that, and that group, they, when they voted to purchase the Serenti Center, it was to sell that fire station, use the proceeds to pay for the Serenti Center, the, the cost to operate it and stuff. And I know that was, I know Billy Gahn was the only one that voted no on purchasing that Serenti Center, but, but that was the idea with the fire station up there.
But so we were, we were told things on the Serenti and, and Engine 15. And we don't get told what's going on. I mean, I don't know that we have to hop in our car and go and see what's going on and why we're keeping that. Why are we paying insurance for a building that's sitting there with a four drawer file cabinet?
Frank, can we check the status of Engine 15?
I will, Mr. King.
And get, get an update as to, like, what, what's it being used for? Is there any, any thoughts of selling it? And if not, why not? Thank you.
I'll ask those questions.
Okay, anyone else?
Fifth order, five A motions.
Mr. King, do you have any motions or comments?
No, at this time.
Thank you. Mr. Schuster, do you have any motions or comments?
I have one. Mr. King covered the Engine 15 question from Ms. Schumacher, but the other one is, I know we've asked a couple of times about a Serenti Center updates, but Frank, can we reach out, get a Serenti Center update? What work has been completed? What work is pending? What is the time utilization, utilization and by who? And what, what percentage of the project is actually completed at this point in time?
I'll get an update, sir.
Thank you. Other than that, I'm going to save comments for, for fifth order items.
Thank you, Mr. Schuster. Dr. Roth, do you have any comments or motions?
No, I don't at this time.
Thank you. Mr. McAndrew, do you have any motions or comments?
I have a couple. Most, I'm taking notes from tonight's meeting. So I agree, Mr. Schuster, but we've been asking multiple times for an update for the Serenti Center. I think, and I agree with you and thank you for throwing it out there, but maybe we should have the powers that be that are responsible for the Serenti Center come in for a caucus. And this way we all have the opportunity to ask the questions and not wait for them in writing. Okay? Please do that, Mr. Waldenberg. We've had, we've had them here in the past, I think, and it's been a while, so I think it's a good idea that they come back.
I'll extend the invite.
Yeah, if I could jump in on this, I know Chief Judge, who has been one of the major people involved with Serenti Center, but I also know that Eileen Cipriani was in charge of a lot of the grant process. So it might be a good idea for Eileen Cipriani to come in with Chief Judge. I'm not sure about Chief Carroll, but I know Chief Judge and she was doing all the grant work for the projects up there.
I'll invite them all, sir.
Invite them all. Thank you. So next, so Mr. Mancini posed a good question. I did request these documents. I didn't get an answer. You got, you got a better answer than I did. I got, I didn't get one. So circle around with that, see if they do exist. I mean, obviously, but, and Solicitor Gilbride, what, maybe you can take a, a look at, how many years are supposed to retain these documents? Are there certain documents that have to be retained longer than others? Is it five years? Is it seven years?
Forever.
Well, okay. So please clarify all of that for us. Would you please, Solicitor Gilbride?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Where am I at here? Number three. So also, you know what, I, you know, I have heard about the, you know, if you want to appeal, what comes to quality of life ticket, that it's a $300 non-refundable fee. I don't know why it's 300. So that's, that's a good question. So I would like to know, what is the 300 for? Is it part of court costs? Is?
I believe it's attorney fees and filing and stuff.
Okay. Well, let's clarify that. Let's get just that piece out of the ordinance or the, the resolution so we all have better clarification as why, you know, if you win, you don't get it back or if you don't win. I think, I think we should take a look at that. It's been brought up more than once, so it's worth another look. All right, what do I have left here? So a few weeks back, we had correspondence, President Smurl, myself and Mr. Gattens from the zoning board. And in the past, they had a police presence. They requested one recently and the mayor on the 29th of, of January said it's going to be provided. Maybe, maybe something happened the other night, but my understanding that at last week's meeting, there wasn't a police presence or yet since, since they requested it. So could you please look into that and see, you know, maybe it was overlooked, but check off the status of that?
I will, sir.
Also, I believe Mr. President Smurl is going to address the rental registration letters that everybody got or most of the citizens got. I got a bunch of calls over the weekend. My daughter who lives in a single across the street, she got one before me and it's definitely a single. I just got mine today. I remember this happening last year. I kind of remember it. It hasn't been confirmed that this happened to the extent it did this year. But if it did, and I know there's a little explanation that you're going to report out, but I got to, I took a look at it and I know you're only the messenger. So I, but I take, I took a look at it and I'm like, this is, so what you have to do is contact rental registration, which, the phones aren't working, by the way. I don't know if you know that, but it's going to be tough to do. Or text them and then they're going to, the rental department will remove the property from the mailing list and respond with the reasoning for it being a suspected rental. This is two years in a row. It's almost like shades of harassment. If, if, if it didn't, if something didn't work last year, they should have been better prepared for this. And I know there's multiple entities that could have been involved and how the mix-up is, but, and there's no, there's no certainty that it won't happen la, next year, right? So if you have to go through this process of, of you're proving that you, you live in a single, I think there should be a better way to identify these houses. We have 10 plus code enforcement electric vehicles buzzing around the city in certain sections of the town that they're supposed to know in and out. I mean, they could, should be able to identify just looking that, oh, that's a double or should have a registration for you, or that's a triple, not wait on a mass mailing that's very expensive to, to you guys, to the residents. It's costly. But let's hope they fix it. I know you're going to report out and, and thank you for doing that, but I just took a look at it. Like I said, I know you're the messenger, but it just, it just doesn't feel right two years in a row. And that is all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McAndrew. So I'll continue on the rental registration thing. So I did some research and found that if you had a, received a letter regarding being a landlord. If you have received a letter regarding being a landlord or a property manager and you are not, there are a number of reasons why this letter may have been sent to you. They include not having a homestead exception. I don't know if I filled mine out and sent it in. Or previously being registered as a rental and on the county website, if you had the property listed as a multi-unit or a parcel or a mixed use or even unknown. What's happening is it kind of sets up a red flag and it, and it sends out this letter automatically to that address. And even if your name is on, has an address for your name, but the property is a different address, that also sends up another red flag. That's why that letter went out. But this year, I don't know how many were sent out last year or this year, but I do know this year, anyone that has received this rental registration paper, if you would please just either call, I'll give you the numbers, 570-348-4193, extension 455. Also Frank has, is going to put this on our website and there are copies over on Kathy's desks that I made. Or you can send it to rselemba@scrantopaa.gov or you can text a message and text the message and tell them that this property is not a rental. Now they say, once this is done, the person that takes care of this, they will respond back to you with the reason why you got the letter this year. So if you would do that, that would really help out with not getting this letter out again next year. that would really help out with not getting this letter out again next year. The, this is for Mr. Coyne. The city business administrator had advised council that the information that was missing in the link should be updated shortly. It may even be back on there today. The IT department was working on it for those blank areas that you were looking for. Also, Norfolk Southern Railroad Bridge, North Main and Euclid Avenue, where they keep hitting it. Our council sent a letter and asked Norfolk Southern Railway to consider labeling the North Main Avenue Railway Bridge with large height restriction lettering, similar to the PA Any Regional Railroad Authority Bridge on Capous Avenue and Olive Street. So, council descended that and asked for that to be done. Also, the other Norfolk Southern Railway Bridge on Theodore Street, going up Theodore Street, our council followed up. It looks like it's falling apart again. We did request City Engineer go to that, Riley Associates, and also to contact PennDOT and the PUC, and see if they can ever get down there and fix that thing properly. I don't know why it wasn't fixed last time, but they are back on that again. As far as the pave-cut inspector, the pave-cut inspector works out of the DPW office right now. And there's also an assistant to the pave-cut inspector, a part-time floater in that department. Two weeks ago, here we had the questions about an anonymous tip line for the Scranton Police Department. That is, that does exist. It is online. If you go on any search engine and you type in Scranton PD anonymous tip, that does come up. So, that is, it does exist. The other things, I found one other thing with the Scranton Police online reporting. I had some problems with illegally parked cars or abandoned cars and stuff, and there is a section in there where you can report those, but it's very difficult to get to it, and I still haven't been able to get to it. So, I had asked the administration if they would update it and include it, an easier way to get to it. The other things we have was, two weeks ago, we had the DPW report, the overtime report, and I don't know if it came misquoted, or it was really off. They said that we use 40% of the budget, I think is what it said. We only use 40% of the administrative budget, which was $500, and they used $200 and 30 cents of it. The rest of it, we do have an update on it, engineering, highway, and refuge, and they are extremely low compared to that 40%. So, that wasn't really accurate.
Yeah, when I mentioned that, I was mentioning just the administrative budget.
Yeah, yeah. Forty percent, oh, okay.
I was referencing the administrative.
Yeah, and then I got called. They said, how do we use that all and the whole thing? So, it was kind of, everybody took it like we had no more money left for the DPW.
It's not a large budget. I did say that. It's not a large budget. However, in one month of the year, we've used that much.
Oh, administration, yeah.
Correct.
And I guess we'll go through this now. For code enforcement, Scranton enforces International Code Council of 2018, and Director Alessi runs the code enforcement department. The inspectors work under Mr. Alessi's license. They work for, basically for him. So, if they go out to inspect a property or something, they report back to Mr. Alessi. But the city does not make them get certified as per this code that we follow. The certification comes from the union contract. The union contract says that any city inspectors must get certified within three months after being hired. So, I know all of our inspectors are certified at this time, unless they have any newly hired ones. And the rest we'll go over as we go through the rest of it.
5B for introduction and ordinance of the council, the city of Scranton, Lackawanna County, Pennsylvania, setting forth its intent to issue one or more series of general obligation bonds of the city in the aggregate principal amount not to exceed $36,200,000 pursuant to the Local Government Unit Debt Act. Determining that such bonds shall evidence non-electoral debt of the city, specifying that such indebtedness to be incurred to provide funds for a certain project of the city, which consists of the following: One, currently refunding the city's outstanding general obligation notes series of 2016; and two, paying the costs and expenses of issuance of the bonds. Setting forth the substantial form of the bonds evidencing the debt, authorizing execution and attestation of such bonds, providing covenants related to debt service applicable to such bonds to the extent required by the Act, and pledging the full faith, credit, and taxing power of the city in support thereof. Declaring that the debt to be evidenced by such bonds, together with all other indebtedness of the city, will not be in excess of any applicable limitation imposed by the Act. Authorizing and directing the preparation, execution, and delivery of all other required documents, and the taking of all other required action, providing for severability of provisions, providing for the repealing of all ordinances or parts of ordinances, insofar as the same shall be inconsistent herewith.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that item 5B be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
On the question?
On the question. So, we heard from PFM tonight, as well as the finance department for the city, some of the fees that we heard will be about $25,000, and that's minus a fee schedule. Proposed savings that we will get from a lower interest rate were up to $1.1 million. So, when it comes to total savings, it's going to be that $1.1 million, if that ends up being the interest rate we get, minus that fee schedule and minus that $25,000. What they were asking for us to do tonight is to pass this so they could get our credit rating and to finalize that fee schedule. I'll vote to move this forward tonight, but I'd like to see us get that actual fee schedule before we move ahead with finalizing the deal. They did say if this deal does not make sense, and the fee that we get locked in, or the interest rate that we get locked in, doesn't make sense that we won't move ahead, but I would just like to know if that will come before council at that point in time when we lock in that fee, or if this vote tonight, as this moves through Seventh Order, is going to be our final vote on this legislation.
Anyone else? All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
The ayes have it, and so moved.
5C for introduction and ordinance, levying local service tax, LST, for year 2024 at $156.
At this time, entertain a motion, item 5C be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question. All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
5D for introduction, a resolution approving the intermunicipal transfer of a restaurant liquor license, R15314, currently owned by Great Wall III, Inc., and located at 1400 Monroe Avenue, Dunmore, Lackawanna County, Pennsylvania, 18509, to Sabore Carabino Restaurant Corp., located at 10,001 South Main Avenue, Scranton, Lackawanna County, Pennsylvania, 18504, as required by the Pennsylvania Liquor Control Board.
At this time, entertain a motion that item 5D be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question. All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
I make a motion to table 5D.
Second.
There's a motion on the floor and a second to table 5D, item 5D. This piece of legislation is being tabled to allow for advertisement of a public hearing held on Tuesday, February 27, 2024 at 5:30 PM. On the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
5E for introduction, a resolution, appointment of Jonathan Bates as a member of the Scranton City Planning Commission for a four-year term to expire on December 31, 2027.
At this time, entertain a motion that item 5E be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question.
On the question. So, I think I've spoke about it somewhat in the past, but what I've seen is individuals that have served on some of these boards for quite some time and do a decent job of it, may want to stay on boards, and they're replaced by others that maybe only have a short stint, or they leave before their term is up. We discussed this somewhat a few weeks ago when it came to the housing authority appointment. This one here, I know, is a replacement of Mr. Finity. I've seen him in action on the City Planning Commission. I think he does a good job. I think he's educated. I do not know if he would like to stay on the board or not. However, I'm just going to voice my opinion on this. I do think he should stay on the board, and this pattern of replacing people who have been on boards for quite some time to be replaced by temporary people that may leave before their term is up, I'm not in favor of. So, I'm going to be voting no on 5E tonight.
Anyone else? All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Aye.
The ayes have it, and so moved.
5F for introduction, a resolution, amending resolution number 346, 2023, a resolution entitled, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into any and all documents necessary to Pennsylvania Anthracite Heritage Museum and Scranton Iron Furnaces, a right of entry to complete stormwater debris removal, to read as, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into any and all documents necessary to Pennsylvania Anthracite Heritage Museum and Scranton Iron Furnaces, a right of entry to complete stormwater debris removal under extended federal deadline, and to honor the iron furnace's proposed blackout dates for events.
At this time, entertain a motion that item 5F be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
On the question. All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
5G for introduction, a resolution, amending resolution number 69, 2022, a resolution as amended entitled, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials of the city of Scranton to take all necessary actions to implement the American Rescue Plan Act grant funds in the amount of $68,746,050 to reallocate funds from various budgeted ARP accounts to allow for violence prevention efforts.
At this time, entertain a motion that item 5G be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question.
On the question. I'd like to make a motion to table 5G until we could have the mayor and the administration come in to have a caucus to describe where these $580,000 of ARPA money will be used when it comes to violence prevention. Nothing here is earmarked, so I don't know where this money will be going. I don't know what groups it will be going to, how they're proven to reduce crime or violence, and I think it would constitute a caucus for that to be discussed in full.
I think it'd be a good idea to get some detail on that.
Let me second it for a second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Mr. King?
Okay, on the question. I agree. I said, as I was saying, I think it's important that we get some detail about exactly, I think we're all, all in support of violence prevention, obviously, based on, especially what has recently happened in our city. But I think it's important that we get into some specifics before we move this forward. So, if we can have the mayor come in or provide us at least with the detail of exactly how these funds are going to be expended, I think that's important. So, that's why I'll be supporting tabling this till such time as we can get that information.
Thank you.
On the question, of course, I'm all for violence prevention. But like my colleague said, you know, $600,000 is a lot of money. It's got to get in the right hands. They have to provide the right resources for this violence prevention. And there was just no detail in the legislation. I agree, we need the mayor and maybe the BA come in and explain, because this just reminds me of like, say, my wife this Saturday coming to me and saying, "Give me $600," because I'm going shopping. And I ask her, "Well, where are you going?" "I don't know." "Where are you going to spend it?" "I don't know yet." So, this reminds me of that. Not that she does this every Saturday, but we need to know where the money's going and make sure. I believe the police says you got most of it. That's a lot of money, but we need to know where it's being allocated for.
Okay. So, we have a motion to table item 5G and a second. All in favor of tabling item 5G signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
The ayes have it, and so moved.
Sixth Order, no business at this time. Seventh Order, 7A, for consideration by the Committee on Public Works for adoption, file the council number 3, 2024, ratifying the execution of a temporary construction easement agreement between the University of Scranton and the city of Scranton to complete the Federal Emergency Management Agency, FEMA, projects in accordance with FEMA debris removal construction plans, which are to be completed by the deadline of October 31, 2024.
What is the recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Public Works?
As chairperson for the Committee on Public Works, I recommend final passage of item 7A.
Second.
On the question.
On the question. Two weeks ago, I had asked about our FEMA projects from 2018. Which ones were pending? Which ones were, did we get that information?
We're still waiting for that list, sir.
All right. Thank you, Mr.-
I'll follow up.
Thank you.
Roll call, please.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McCandrick?
Yes.
Mr. Smurl?
Yes. I hereby declare item 7A legally and lawfully adopted.
7B, previously tabled for consideration by the Committee on Rules for Adoption, resolution number 9, 2024, approving the intermunicipal transfer of a restaurant liquor license, R7373, currently owned by Mariano's Caccino LLC, located at 414 Church Street, Jessup, Lackawanna County, Pennsylvania, 18434, to Gourmet Dining LLC, located at 2400 Yorkmont Road, Charlotte, Mecklenburg County, North Carolina, 28217, as required by the Pennsylvania Liquor Control Board.
As chairperson for the Committee on Rules, I recommend final passage of item 7B.
Second.
On the question. Roll call, please.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McCandrick?
Yes.
Mr. Smurl?
Yes. I hereby declare item 7B legally and lawfully adopted.
7C, previously tabled for consideration by the Committee on Public Works for adoption, file the council number 1, 2024, designating the 1200 block of Watson Street as a one-way street allowing traffic to flow in a westerly direction and prohibiting traffic from flowing in an easterly direction.
What is the recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Public Works?
As chairperson for the Committee on Public Works, I recommend final passage of item 7C.
Second.
On the question. Roll call, please.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McCandrick?
Yes.
Mr. Smurl?
Yes. I hereby declare item 7C legally and lawfully adopted.
Eighth Order, 8A, resolution number 9, 2024.
This resolution was taken from the table and voted on in Seventh Order.
8B, file the council number 1, 2024.
This ordinance was taken from the table and voted on in Seventh Order. If there's no further business, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Meeting adjourned.